Our new guardians are entering our boardroom. We are very excited about this today. Gentlemen, I know we're going to be talking about you more later, but we appreciate you more than we can really express in words at this moment. So, thank you. And with that, I will turn that over to Ms. Bryant.
We're going to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's it, Mr. Giddy.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. We want to also wish our esteemed colleague, the Honorable Sandra Count, happy birthday today.
What a way to celebrate, right?
I think you're celebrating the 12th anniversary of your 25th birthday.
At least.
We will adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent. Have a motion by Ms. Bryant and a second by Ms. Powers to approve the agendas recommended by the superintendent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Apologize here. Next, we will have citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments? And we will then go ahead and move into school support services.
Good afternoon. I request the approval of the petty cash dispersment to the assigned food service personnel for the 2019-2020 school year.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, second by Ms. Count, to approve the petty cash dispersment to assigned food services personnel for the 2019-2020 school year. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
And we have to move forward to the instructional and support recommendations.
Yep, I apologize for that one. I request approval of instructional support recommendations as I would like.
I make a motion to approve support and instructional recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Dodd, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the instructional and support recommendations. Any questions or comments?
There was some clarification I called in the food services.
Is your mic if you would?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My voice is low, so you don't hear any word I'm saying. Okay, so the very last page is resignations for 2019-2020. I saw Dan there, I saw Lance there, I thought, why are they there? Why are they just changing jobs? And I wanted to be assured that they had resigned. They said, no, no, they're just changing jobs, so.
That's great. They had to resign from their current position to accept the promoted position.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Next is a part we are very excited about, and so I'm going to bring forward Chief Grant. And we'll let you take it from there.
Thank you very much. I, as well as, I know all of you are very excited to be having our guardians coming on, and I think they're very prepared to start the upcoming school year. In addition to the 144 hours that they receive through their guardian certification training, they've received well over, and will be receiving well over, 150 hours of additional training. They will be certified Alice instructors. They've been and are going through Stop the Bleed, AED, CPR training today. They just finished tactical medic training on learning how to deal with things like gunshot wounds and trauma issues. They are going through suicide prevention training, mental health training, mandatory reporter training. They've been through additional tactical training, both with a private company the school board brought in to train them and with the sheriff's office for two days of training with the SROs and doing entry-level training and responding to active assailants. So needless to say, they've done familiarization with all of our schools on every campus, and we just believe they're going to be an amazing asset in this coming year. We look forward to having them. And then I'll get into reading their resumes so you guys can see the caliber of employees that they are. I want to also thank and just express my appreciation to all the family members of our guardians that are here today for letting your loved one take on this endeavor. This is, you know, them putting themselves on the front line for the safety and security of our kids. And as husbands and wives and mothers and fathers and children of these guardians, be very, very proud of what they've taken on. I know many of them have done a lot of distinguished things in their career, but I don't think anything is more important than the job they are headed to for the school district. And we are just immensely proud of them and thank all of you and their support as they've gone through this training and will go through this coming year. So, thank you so much. The first one I'll call up and talk about is Winston Brooks. Winston is a 27-year law enforcement veteran in Connecticut. He retired as a sergeant. He worked in the cold case division, certified police instructor, internal affairs supervisor, background in recruiting supervisor, shooting review board, and has a master's degree in psychology with concentration on criminal behavior. The next guardian? Tim Ellis. Tim has graduated with me through the Citrus High School school system, outstanding individual that has worked 10 years in armed security for Duke Energy. The next one, Jose Mendez. He worked 28 years for the Federal Bureau of Prisons, where he retired as a lieutenant. He worked on the special operations team for 11 years, seven years as a school monitor for the Miami-Dade School District. Just extremely happy to have these guys. Next is Anthony Mendoza. He spent seven and a half years in corrections and security, three years with YMCA working with children, and he's worked the last two years as an ESE peer professional for the school district. I can tell you that when we hired him away from Crest where he was working, that the entire staff over there, I think, called and tried to talk me out of it because they loved him so much. They said, he's just wonderful with the kids, so.
Loved me too.
Next, Anthony Ramos. Angel. Sorry. 20 years in Federal Bureau of Prisons, retired as a captain, Army veteran of 40 years, volunteer firefighter, worked with the Citrus County School Board for the last five years. We got Roland Reich. 25 years in law enforcement in New York, retired as a sergeant. He worked as an SRO, as a drug force task officer, was a detective. He's a graduate of the FBI National Academy and worked in school safety and security for the Arlington Central School District. Next, we have Mr. Way, Thomas Way. 23-year law enforcement professional in South Florida, Marine Corps veteran of 40 years, extremely experienced down in South Florida law enforcement. And then, last but not least, Mike Williams. 27 years law enforcement with the Citrus County Sheriff's Office. He was a SWAT team leader for 14 years. He worked in our warrants division, was a trainer in our trainers' training division, and a firearms instructor. So, as you can hear from listening to the experience that all these gentlemen bring, lifelong law enforcement officers, security professionals, working with children, they truly have a passion for the job. They've done this their entire lives. And I think we are definitely blessed to have them here with our district. This is just an unbelievable wealth of experience, and I have the utmost faith and confidence in each and every one of these guys. So, with that, I think we're going to have somebody come up and raise your oath.
Gentlemen, if you would please raise your hands. I'm sorry. Oh, we're going to do it one at a time. If you would raise your hands and state your name that I solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the State of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold this position under the laws of the state, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of school safety guardian on which I am now about to enter. So, help me guide.
If you all brought somebody with you today who want to go to the microphone and introduce them, we'd love that.
Hi, my wife Jessica Brooks is here.
My wife, 15 years today, tell you.
You better with me, I got a few of them over here. My high school sweetheart, and my wife for the last 38 years, Anna. My daughter Stephanie. My two grandchildren that both go to Lancaster High School, Gus and Sammy. My sister Maritza, who looks like my wife. And my niece.
My beautiful niece.
Malia.
My wife Teresa for 38 years. My wife Gabia. And my two of my sons, Si and David, who's the next one.
I have my wife Mandy Mendoza. Three female children, Brayden, Jackson, and Katie.
And they forgot to introduce their new work wife, Ms. Hemel.
Gentlemen, I believe I read in the paper that you all represent approximately 183 years of experience. And we are so blessed to have you, board members. Is there anything you would like to share? And I wanted to give you an opportunity.
I just want to say thank you and how blessed you are.
Training is incredible. We were always training up in Mike Evans. In fact, he provides some of those jobs with incredible training. Really was your fit.
And I just want to say on behalf of the school district and the entire board how excited we are. We met with some of the SROs this morning and how excited we are about the partnership in our guardian program, the SRO program, and the exercise that we'll have on campus to just keep our kids and staff safe. Thank you for making the commitment. Thank you for joining our team. And we look to great things for this school to do. So, thank you again.
Here, here.
I'd like to say that too. You know, you guys are a great addition to our safety plan. And I know that we all feel a lot more comfortable having a secondary person ready to respond. And I know the public does too. So, thank you for willing to serve in this position. And we look forward to a lot of good things and a lot of great work. Sheriff's Office too, cooperation with their office and the SROs. But you guys are a class act, and I appreciate you guys being a part of our school district.
Okay. If you guys don't have anything for them, I'm going to let them get back to, get back to work.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, they're a very impressive group of individuals as they leave. I think that most of the resumes rival that of any command staff in any agency that you'll find, so, whether locally or anywhere else. So, definitely a well-trained, well-disciplined group. Families, you aren't obligated to sit if you want to go join your loved ones.
I meant to give the families too.
We'll just go ahead and recess here for about two or three minutes while I give them that opportunity, and then we'll reconvene here. Okay, we will reconvene. And with that, we need to approve the safety, I'm sorry, the school resource officer agreement between the Citrus County School Board and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office for the 2019-2020 school year. Ms. Wilson has, she has the correct.
I'm just, the amount budgeted for the contract is actually correct. The funding source, the FEFP portion is 999,000, not 922,000, so I just want you to be aware of that. 999, 729, 50. The total amount is correct, yes. Just, it's coming, a part is coming from the BOCC and a part is coming from the FEFP. So, I just wanted to clear that up.
And then, also, there was a correction on the summary there too, right? On the ADS. There wasn't going to be a full-time SRO.
Correct. Correct. On the executive summary there, ADS should not be on there.
I believe that was at the request of the ADS board. That was not a decision that we were making. That was a decision as they govern themselves as a charter school.
That is correct.
Did you answer a question you made? Some of the parents asked about school in session with the SROs and tutoring after.
Yes. Can you bring that?
So, you know, does teachers often tutor before school and often tutor after school?
Their workday is an eight-hour workday. I can tell you that the guardians' workday will start 15 minutes prior to the teacher workday and ends at the same time as the teacher workday. So, the guardians will be on campus for that. And the teachers are 7:45, 7 hours 45 minutes. Guardians will be there for an eight-hour day, like in 15 minutes prior to the teacher workday starting. Their task is to get, be on campus, making sure they do a security sweep of the entire campus, all the exterior doors, windows, everything is secure and we're starting out the day without anybody having snuck on our campus throughout the night. And then their normal workday will end when the teacher workday ends.
Chief Grant, is that, as far as the timeframe before school and then for after school, is that closely parallel the SROs or somewhat parallel?
Yeah, they'll actually probably be on campus before the SROs, and then they'll finish the day about the same time as an SRO. Now, if an SRO has been hired for a off-duty event, they'll be there for those events, after-school events that are athletic events that SROs are sometimes hired for. They will obviously be there for those. But to specifically say their workday is long enough to encompass any tutoring before and after school for every workday, that's just not part of their, wouldn't be part of their 40-hour work week.
Mr. Grant?
Yeah, so, for the board members, I know you've read the contract, and there are several instances, or several times in there that it talks about at no time will a school be without an SRO on campus during school hours while school is in session, including summer school. That's on page five, at the top of the page. And, you know, that is what the contract is for. And the presence of a guardian on a school campus is not the reason for an SRO. It's not a reason, an SRO does not have to be there. The SRO still will be there at all times during the school hours while school is in session. And, you know, that is clearly defined in the contract. And that is something that I think was being done last year. But, you know, of course, there was always some questions about summer school. Will we work through all those things? But the fact is that an SRO will be on campus. If the SRO has to be gone for training, there will be a backup SRO. And we have three sergeants that were, or three sergeants or above that were, that's in the contract. So, usually it's one of those sergeants, but it could be another patrol deputy. It could be any law enforcement officer, sheriff. But there will be a law enforcement officer, a deputy sheriff from the sheriff's office at those schools. If they were to grant training day for SRO or vacation or any of those things, there's still going to be an SRO in that position, correct?
Yes, sir. And that's been made abundantly clear with the sheriff's office that they cannot count the guardian as the safe school officer for that day to cover the statute. By statute, the SRO is that safe school officer. He is mandated, or she is mandated to be there. They are mandated to be there by contract. Have somebody there from Bell Bell during the school day. Guardians are an additional level of security. And as we've also said, you know, we don't really talk about where our guardians may be from day to day. They will be wherever in the district, the needs of the district, that they warrant their presence. So, you know, any given day, they can't depend on a guardian being at a school even though they may have been at that school the previous day because if there's a higher security need at another school, we'll use the guardians fluidly in that capacity to make sure that wherever the greatest threats are facing our district at any given day, that's how we assign the guardians for that day. So, that is clearly above and beyond what the SROs are going to be responsible for. They are meeting the statutory requirement, and this is that extra level of security that this board has had the vision to enact.
And as we go on with that page, at the bottom of the page on A3A under reports, it says, "The school principal shall notify school personnel that acts which pose a threat to school safety and crimes are to be reported to the school principal." And that is obviously in a training area. I mean, we're going to make sure that our employees, our school instructional staff and other staff members at school are to report any act which poses a threat to school safety.
Correct.
But then on four, we did, we did make a little change to that, right? Mr. Bradshaw on number four? So, can you just cover that real quick, son?
Okay. The statute says that there's, it's, you know, on today's, I think it's that's four. That all came out of... 1,006.13 in paragraph 4B, and that says, "Agreements include the role of school resource officers if applicable," which it is in this case, and handling reported incidents procedures requiring school personnel to consult the school resource officers concerning appropriate delay acts and crimes. So, it said, we would prefer that you have to give them the opportunity to go and talk to the school resource officer. We want to go and talk to the principal and the school resource officer so that we stay in class and what's going on in campuses. But they have to have the ability to go and do something.
So, a teacher would have the ability to communicate with the school resource officer? And that obviously is something that's going to be communicated to our staff members, and is that going to be in your role?
Yeah, so, there's a couple of things under that statute. This is one of my printed out of 7030. We're covering those two and some specifically of what the district requires and what the principal's requirements are in notifying their staff. I've had this taped up in my office for a while now because I don't want to make sure. And I've got, you know, Wes obviously contacted about this when we were developing the contract. I've also drafted an email to the principals talking about their role and responsibility in notifying all their staff. I've sent it up to the executive team for their review. We've discussed how we want to best present that. And then before the start of the school year, that will be sent out to the principals so we have that documented, that they were notified and then so they can notify their staff.
Justice, it uses on number six, the price, the school resource unit. What is that, what does that comprise of? What is the school resource unit?
The school resource, it's all the school resource officers as a unit with their chain of command is what basically that, you know, shall be. So, if something happens and there's any changes to that roster, to that unit as a whole, they don't really use the term like squad or platoon. They're, it's just the school resource officer unit. So, their chain of command, if they take an SRO and, you know, pull him from the program and assign a new SRO and the assignment changes, they have to notify me.
And one of the questions I have on one of the addendums on our exhibits, exhibit B on the confidential agreement on the sharing of information is, you know, the behavioral threat assessments have access to criminal histories and law enforcement or the SRO sits on the threat assessment, has access to student records regarding the student. But would a behavioral threat assessment be considered an emergency situation? I was just curious because number five on page 23 had mentioned that SROs may not inspect and or copy confidential student education records except in emergency situations. So, probably a behavioral threat assessment would be...
Yeah, that would be post-threat. I mean, depending on the nature of the threat, you know, you may have that type of a threat where there is that immediately sharing of information because they're done almost immediately. Or you may have a threat that the threat assessment team's looking at, but because of the nature of the threat, other investigators are already moving forward and investigating, you know, the nature of that threat. So, there could be, you know, two different things going on at the same time.
That's like in the Family Education Rights Privacy Act, generally law enforcement, just in general, they can't call up and...
Right.
...get student records in the case of like a, an emergency. We get a phone call that the student is told three of his friends that they're bringing a gun, they're coming to school. And then we could go ahead and share. We did, you know, we've had this, you know, this discipline with them and this discipline with us to go ahead and provide that information to them in the case of an emergency. But it's in general, it's kind of like anybody else. You know, unless you have a legitimate education, you just can't go looking around at student records.
Right. And this really didn't change though, did it, Wes, from last year? Was this...
It's the same. The only thing that changed is that we took out, they were reporting to Mr. Natchez to direct their risk management, and we changed it to the school safety specialists.
But I just, you know, one of the things that we want to make sure, and I don't have any doubt this being done, that we are in the position where we can share information should the need be there. And the same way, sheriff's office shall share information with us and AJJ. So, I just want to make sure that that wasn't going to hinder.
And the statutes that were clear on being able to share that CJI when needed to the threat assessment teams, criminal justice information.
Anything else? And, Mr. Bradshaw, I think that we already kind of are aware of this, but just for clarification purposes, because there's been a lot of information out there in the public about what districts are in compliance and not in compliance, both from some of the testimony that Chief Grant just gave along with this contract, it would appear that we are at and exceeding compliance as best as we know it and as best as it can be determined.
Yes. I mean, we are going to have a school resource officer on every single campus. The new law says that charter schools, they have the election to pick what they want. Ours is to pick a guardian. And so, we will comply that way. And then we're also going to have that additional layer of protection with the school guardians also. So, yes, we're more than compliant.
And certainly with a number of the things that Chief Grant, you've talked about that these guardians are doing, it well exceeds the 144 hours worth of training and initial screening that is in statute. And it sounds like you are on a regular basis exceeding that with your expectations of professional development and training.
I would argue that our guardians are the best trained guardians in the state. So...
Mr. Sheriff, I'll make a motion to approve the SRO agreement for the school board and sheriff's office for 1920, 2019, 2020 school.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Counts, to approve the school resource officer agreement between, I'm sorry, between the school board of Citrus County and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office for the 2019-2020 school year. And Chief Grant, if you could finish, you're welcome to go ahead and finish your statement.
I was just going to add that, you know, the point Mr. Dodd brought up earlier about the SROs being on campus from bell to bell, we're very aware as the guardian program of our obligations to AES in that same respect, because they did choose to go with a guardian so that if at any time we have to make those same arrangements based on the guardian we've assigned out there having to do something else, we have the same obligation with our program to ensure that AES has that person on campus and the guardian from bell to bell. So if our assigned guardian is not there for one reason or another, we're very aware of our responsibilities to that school.
I just had one thought when I was reading through all of this in the memorandum too, that Stoneman Douglas shooter walked out with the kids, and all of a sudden I started to think of Alasgow, maybe very cognizant of the fact that these guardians need to be aware of all the faces of the children. Evacuation could be one of the options that a teacher uses, and I would hate to think that the shooter would walk out with those kids. And I don't, why, it hit my mind, but you guys have to know almost all those children. I know we've got a lot on the, the middle schools and high schools have a large population, but I think it's really important that that's face recognition if a teacher's choosing to evacuate, and that teacher needs to know if they see a stranger with their group, call for help.
Absolutely.
Okay, board, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Chief Grant. Thank you for bringing them all forward and for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to approve the memorandum of understanding between the school board of Citrus County, the sheriff's office regarding the guardian program, and the school safety specialists.
I'm going to request approval for the 2019-2020 guardian agreement between Citrus County School Board and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Counts, a second by Ms. Bryan, to approve the memorandum of understanding between the school board of Citrus County, Florida, and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office regarding the school guardian program and the school safety specialist. Any questions or comments?
I've got a question. I'm just curious, Buddy, in reference to how you foresee and what you've experienced so far with the guardian program and working with the SROs, I mean, I've heard some good things, but what is the outlook here for us in working with the school resource officers, training with them, communicating with them? Can you just kind of talk a little bit about that to us, what you foresee?
Sure, absolutely. So I've been in close contact with the supervision of the SRO program, and we have worked through a number of issues, but one of the things that, you know, really, we felt really important was their ability to train together. And we were able to do two full days of training with the SROs and practicing entry level, training into a school. We used IPS, it was last Thursday and Friday, and they spent two full days with our guardian program, setting up as teams, SRO teams, the SRO they will be working with, doing these entries and responding to these different scenarios. At the same time, they will all be issued the emergency radios. We've worked out a new frequency for the school board template for the guardians, so they will have access to both, as you're familiar with, what we call TAC East and TAC West. They will also have direct communication with the main fire channel and the main EMS channel. So in addition to our normal school board channels, which they'll work on a, on a regular basis, if there, you know, is the unfortunate event that we have something in a school where we have, you know, an active assailant or something along those lines, they will immediately be able to transfer over to the channel that all the law enforcement officers that work on, on that side of the county, either what they call TAC East or TAC West, go to that channel and talk to both the SRO and dispatch and all other responding officers. And that's very important for the safety of those responding officers, the SRO, the guardian, and all the school staff, because, you know, we know the Canto School Complex is right next to the Emergency Operations Center, and there's a whole host of law enforcement officers that work there that when that call goes out will immediately be responding. And our guardian, their call signs, our guardians one, one through nine, they're, that is their call sign. So on the radio, you always have a call sign. Mine, when I left, was like Alpha 197. So ours are guardian one, two, three, four, all the way up to guardian nine. And dispatch will know who they are, so when they get on there and say, you know, guardian six, I'm at the 200 building, and they, you know, get the scenario of what they're seeing, all the responding officers will be able to hear that and know that, you know, who our guardian is and what he's doing so that they're relaying information in real time. And that was something that was, there was no give in our conversations with the sheriff's office on that. That was, that had to happen, and it is happening. So we're, we're very proud of that. So the training, I think we have another training coming up in October where we will be doing a much broader training with the sheriff's office on October 2nd to do even more in-depth training. So that's, the training that's happened over the summer, you know, we got out of the way, but for a second, don't stop and think that we're done training. We're going to continue to train at every opportunity throughout the school year. We're going to continue to train with them as a team, and I can tell you that the SROs and their supervision have bent over backwards to welcome the guardians. They, as anybody else would, have been extremely impressed with what we've been able to hire in terms of our guardians with their experience and qualifications. I mean, most of these guys have a lot more experience than our current SROs do. So, I mean, you know, they really respect those guys. They don't think above them or anything like that. They've really gotten along well when they've trained together, and they come to me and called me directly and said, hey, I've really been impressed with, with your guardians that you brought on board, we're really looking forward to working with. So I think it's going to be a very smooth team that will be developed, and I'm really excited about, you know, what they will bring to the campuses this year.
Buddy, there's no doubt you have a great ability to manage these guardians, and you put them in the place that they, they need to be. And I think, you know, I respect the idea of not making, you know, not making a public assignment as far as where these people will be, because they could be a little somewhere for a special event, and we're still going to have an SRO on, on every campus, and so the guardians will be an added, you know, layer for us, and, you know, I look forward to how we integrate them into our, our safety plan, and, you know, we send the message that, you know, we're going to be ready at our schools should an active assailant.
And Chief Grant and I were discussing this earlier today because we do not believe, and I say this is 100%, but as of today, and the districts he's dealt with and the ones I've heard from, I don't think other districts have done what we've done, where we've got SROs and guardians in addition to the SROs on some of the same campuses. Some of them have SROs and the guardians cover the elementary world, we've got an SRO. Some have all guardians, so I think the board has really taken a big step forward on including the guardians and making our history, our campus stack. And you know, in basketball, all the different, different sports, you have an A-team and a B-team usually. Well, you've got two A-teens in the company.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, I believe that. And, and I will say it again here today publicly to all of you so I can, I can see it, the same thing I stated to our community newspaper in an earlier interview, that I am just extremely proud to work for a district and a school board and a superintendent who was willing to make such a strong commitment to the safety and security of our students and our staff and our schools by providing an additional layer of protection. I mean, that is a very strong position that you have all taken, and you're to be very commended for, for that vision. It's just, it's unremarkable and I think unparalleled throughout the state right now.
Thank you, Chief Grant, and we also thank you because the leadership of the things like you've talked about with the radio systems and ensuring that there was no stone left unturned and making sure that our training and the tools needed so that should a tragedy take place, we were able to respond. So we respect you and thank you for that. Thank you again. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Legal Matters.
I don't have it to think of.
You were so happy to say that.
You just went over what I...
That's right. Mr. Bishop.
Mr. Bishop.
Dr. Huber.
Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Dodd.
Just a couple of things, you know, we've got the back-to-school sales tax holiday coming up again, right? August the 2nd through the 6th, so be a great opportunity. You know, I know that the Education Foundation's been working on different things, stuff the bus and all the different things that go on with getting ready for school, but, you know, that's an added savings to, to the taxpayer to be able to take part in that back-to-school sales holiday. And the other thing is, I understand that they are starting a new competition or Congress, United States Congress is going to have an app competition. I don't know if you've heard about that yet, I was just, read some information about it. And it's like the Congressional Art Contest where they're going to recognize, or they recognize artwork, but I guess every congressman is going to, in their district, going to be able to have an app development that they'll pick a winner for a computer application, an app. And we have the, the Academy of Computer Science in Superschool, but I would like to, you know, see what we could do. I know Congressman Webster is behind the program, and so I just, I didn't know if it had been, if anything had been received yet on it, but it looks like an interesting program, and I thought that maybe we could get out in front of that in the opening year maybe to see if, and see if our high schools, we can get those involved, so...
I just sent me an email.
Pardon?
I just sent me an email.
Okay, okay.
I'll check that.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you.
Ms. Bryan.
I'm glad to be home. I miss Alaska, but I'm glad you're back.
Me too.
We're glad you're back.
I was in Alaska, in Alaska, in North Carolina, but when I got home, I thought, hey, I like this. I'm like, good to be home.
Oh, okay, good to be home, that's right. I think you said, hey, I like the mountains. I was in the mountains the summer too, so kind of enjoyed being a little deeper.
Sixty-one degrees.
And other things, I'll bring up in another meeting, just to bring my notes.
Last day in Swelter, heat upon the sassa.
They can hear brain bones.
But I did attend the Wiccoochie graduation for the law enforcement officers, and Shaw, SRO number one's son graduated, so we've got another certiche as a deputy sheriff in the county, and that was nice. But it was, I'm still amazed when I go to the different graduations from WTC, how their decorum is so professional. This one was, this one was really amazing. I always thought the nursing was, but this was really exciting to see. And then on Monday, I went to my four SAC schools and sat with them for about 35 minutes because they were four of them, and they were all going from 8:30 to 11:30, so, but they were all working on their school improvement plan, they were working on, you know, last year's what worked, what didn't work, and stuff like that, so I was really impressed with, with all four of them. And, you know, looking forward to, you know, communicating with our schools, and I, I started a little saying with them, that if you can't tell us what you, you need, we can't help you. So some of them are still admitting that they have some problems, that they've got to tell us they've got problems or we can't, we can't change policy to help them, so. But I was really pleased with, with all four of my schools, and glad to have another year. Looking forward to next year.
Me too.
Thank you, Ms. Counts, and I too got a chance to go to two of my three school improvement plans, and we ran a little over on, on one of them, so I think quite yet to where I need, I wanted to on that one. But I agree, such great, rich data, and they were having some hard conversations. These were not, I mean, and these are schools that are well-performed schools, but they were still, no one was afraid to, to have some real difficult sometimes conversations. Certainly, what I think was so impressive was that it wasn't just the bottom quartile or the top quartile, it was everyone that they were focused in on how they could be the most successful. Two parts that I think, two things that out of that came out that I would bring forward is there was great conversation on remediation enrichment and the tools that we're using. I heard things like, again, iReady, Achieve 3000, Alex, or some of, you know, strategies that were being used, and all of those I heard focused back on instruction and classroom instructions. So I bring up that, and mental health was a big part of all the conversations and the impact that that was having together. So with that, I talked to the superintendent a little bit about, you know, as we talked about maybe that September tour and maybe incorporating being able to see some of those things, and the superintendent had some thoughts and ideas too. So we're going to, you know, continue to have some of those conversations, but I'm just, you know, putting out that those were some great things that I think we saw with that.
Mr. Kennedy? Yes, sir. Where does that, what we have pretty much decided, the September workshop is when we're going to do this kind of mobile meeting, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And is there like any idea as far as the number of schools or would be...
That's, we're still working with the superintendent, huh? She's, and she's, she's still talking about it, thinking about it, and going through what we're, the agenda is. Agenda's still the superintendent's until it comes to us. The Superintendent Association regularly reminds the, the Forest School Board Associations...
On a regular basis.
On a regular basis, no.
As you say, this, you know, we've, we're, there's a lot of great things about Forest City Elementary School, it is a school that we're looking at, you know, as far as the need for construction, so I don't know if it would be advisable, or if we'd like to make that one of our locations, I think it could be beneficial. Again, I don't know what you're planning, I, I didn't know if we're going to be like going all over the place or just one or two places.
We just started talking about that this morning.
Yeah, and I, and I love the idea of going to Forest City.
I was thinking too, we may, you know, depending on how far the Canto's project, the road is going, might be a good way of seeing that. Be great to see some of the guardians situation of that. We've got the, the new specialists, you know, that's a behavioral specialist, so, and I know the superintendent's thinking, and I want to sit with my staff and have a conversation with them, because she's funny about things like that, so, but that's a great, I think that's a great suggestion, Mr. Dodd. I will, before we adjourn and move into our workshop, I would say that this is going to be our last paper, only paper meeting of our school board, because we will be going on our next meeting with board docs. So I would just encourage us to, if we can, bring our devices if we'd like, and if we won't, we want to make sure that we communicate with Lisa to have a printed version for them. And I know some of you will probably, there's going to be a blend up here. And that's, and, and, no, no, I didn't mean it that way, but that's okay. We did...
I'll let the device, I'll just use it.
We have differentiated instruction for our school board members and presenting, and so that is, that is it. But, but this will be, and so board docs will be coming online for us for the next meeting, so I know we'll be probably encouraging each other to have some of that, but we, I'm excited, we're, it's going to be new, and we will take it slow, so that we're, we're not, you know, we're, we're pretty fast right now, and so with that, anything else before I adjourn?
I just want to remind the...
The executive session for the...
Oh, yes, sir. I, thank you.
And I want to remind the board members for Friday morning, the back to, welcome back to teachers, the speaker starts at 9:30, and the breakfast for secondary is at 7:30, and breakfast will be, I don't remember, I think it's like 8:15 or something like that. Anyways, people will be on campus at the Canto beginning of March, so...
And the board members, yeah, board members will be in the...
Yeah. Do they have some things going on too in the, in the gym, and does that start at eight or...
That starts about eight, eight o'clock, I think, because that's where the secondary and the elementary swap, or breakfast available.
Right.
Okay.
What I, uh, yes. So what I'm going to go ahead and do is adjourn, and then I believe the superintendent is going to have an executive session. So we're going to adjourn the public meeting, we're going to go into an executive session before we go into the workshop. So for the executive session, who leads? You just have a security and, and Wes. You just have a security and Wes. Safety, I'm sorry, it's a shade session regarding safety and security. Is that correct, Mr. Grant? Just want to make sure I say it right. Thank you. And if we can turn on our lights.